Thought it would be appropriate if we had a moment of silence after the pledge. So, please.
Pledge.
Pledge. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Ms. Buck?
Mayor Ziegler?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Beagle?
Here.
Councilmember Gottschall?
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy is excused. Councilmember Leader?
Here.
Councilmember Resnick?
Here.
Councilmember Smiley?
Here.
Coram present.
Thank you. Any changes to the agenda, Mr. Brown?
No, Your Honor, I don't have any changes or additions.
Any from up here? One change that I'd like to make is I've asked Director Moore to come up and just have a bit of a commemorative talk about 9/11 and just in honor of the victims of 9/11 and just a reminder to everyone of what a serious day that was.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Ron Moore. I'm the Public Safety Director for the City of Wixom. And Mayor, and members of council, thank you very much for the honor to speak tonight publicly on behalf of the City of Wixom on this 17th anniversary of a tragic day in our nation's history. I'm grateful for the opportunity. When I woke up this morning and made my way into work, went over to the fire department, I was getting ready for a -- to sit in on a business forum, I looked at the weather outside, and I typically do that on 9/11 and in the 17 years since that tragic day. I like to look and see what does the weather look like on those particular 9/11s as compared to September 11, 2001. And this morning, you probably all saw that it -- the day started out very cloudy and overcast and somewhat cool. But by 11:00 a.m., the clouds had broken and the sky was a beautiful shade of blue and the temperature started to go up. And it was very reminiscent of what the weather was like on September 11, 2001. It reminded me very much of what it was like on that fateful day. And if you recall, on September 11, 2001, at 8:46 a.m., began one of the worst days in our nation's history, when American Airlines Flight 11 crashed into the North Tower of the World Trade Center in New York City. Just a few minutes later, at 9:03, United Airlines Flight 175 intentionally crashed into the South Tower of the World Trade Center. At 9:37, American Airlines Flight 77 intentionally crashed into our Pentagon. At 9:59, we all watched, many of us watched in horror, as we saw the South Tower crumble to the ground. Four minutes later, at 10:03, United Airlines Flight 93 crashed upside down at 500 miles an hour, it's estimated, into a field in Shanksville, Pennsylvania. And at 10:28, we saw the second tower, the North Tower, also crumble to the ground. On Tuesday, September 11, 2001, we lost 2,977 of our fellow Americans. The youngest victim that day was two years old. The oldest victim was 85. Of those victims, we lost 343 New York City firefighters. We lost 60 police officers, 37 of them coming from the Port Authority Police and 23 coming from NYPD. We've lost over 2,200 U.S. troops in Afghanistan alone, beginning in the month immediately following 9/11. I'd like to spend just a couple of moments talking to you about a couple of the people that were lost on that fateful day. 29-year-old New York City firefighter Jimmy Riches died in the North Tower. Jimmy was part of Engine Company Number Four of FDNY. He spent two years as a firefighter for New York City and just -- and prior to that, he spent eight years as a New York City cop, decided he wanted to try the other side of the coin. Jimmy was a star basketball player and his loved ones described him as always having a smiling face. 49-year-old Port Authority Police Sergeant Bob Koffers was at his post in Hoboken, New Jersey, when he probably looked across the Hudson River and saw the crashing -- the jets crashing into the towers. He immediately rushed across the Hudson River and went right to Ground Zero in an attempt to help, because that's what heroes do, they rush to danger. It's unknown exactly where Bob died. They never found any remains of Bob, but we do know that he was at Ground Zero trying to help. Bob left behind his elementary school sweetheart that he married and two adult kids. As though 2,977 lives gone, as though that's not bad enough, to date, we've lost over 2,000 firefighters, police officers, paramedics, doctors, electricians, and steelworkers to illnesses that are directly related to the toxic fumes that they were breathing at the World Trade Center in an attempt to try to save lives. Over 2,000 so far. I know I'm painting a grim tale here, and it is a dark period in our nation's history. So I guess the question is, where is the hope here? The Bible says in the Book of Romans, "Do not be overcome by evil, but overcome evil with good." In the days immediately following 9/11, hundreds of millions of dollars flooded in in donations. People gave tens of thousands of gallons of blood, of their own blood, to the American Red Cross. Millions of pounds of food and supplies rushed in, hundreds of thousands of hot meals were served to the rescue workers, church attendance soared, and we even saw our own Congress, Republican, Democrat, standing shoulder to shoulder singing "God Bless America." We saw the overcoming of evil with good. You know, as I was speaking to the business forum this morning over at the fire station, and we were telling tales of what we were doing on 9/11, I can still see the anguish in their eyes 17 years later as they discuss where they were, what they were doing, what they saw on television. I see the social media comments that have come flooding into my social media postings where people are just -- you can feel the anguish and the heartache still 17 years later in their comments. So what good comes from a terrible event like this? Well, I believe when we see donations come in and blood and money and food and supplies and when we see people so heartbroken over events like this, I believe events like this drives us to compassion. Compassion and love for our fellow man. I, for one, am proud to lead a police department and a fire department of compassionate men and women who genuinely love their community. I'm proud to be part of the bigger Wixom community that also comes together when we have a local emergency like we saw earlier this summer. So I guess I would just conclude my comments here as I speak on behalf of the men and women of the Wixom Police and Fire Departments, on behalf of the Mayor and Council, city administration, and the employees, I guess I would just offer my -- an hour heartfelt thoughts and prayers to all those who have suffered because of this event in our nation's history, whether they suffered directly through losing their lives directly from the terrorists or if they've been suffering indirectly through illnesses, depression, post-traumatic stress disorder. On behalf of the City of Wixom, I would just offer our thoughts and prayers to all those in need of comfort tonight. May we never forget this day in our nation's history and may God bless the United States of America and the City of Wixom. Thank you.
Thank you. With the meeting. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes. The first is a special city council meeting of August 28, 2018. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Any changes in the minutes? Any points anybody wants to bring up? Have a motion, a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The second set of minutes is the regularly -- regular city council meeting of the same date. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Or?
Any discussion, corrections? Okay. Go to motion, and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is correspondence. There's two items under correspondence. The first is a notice of hearing for the customers of Consumers Energy Company, case number U-20075. The second item under correspondence was a notice of hearing for the customers of DTE Electric Company, case number U-20172. Hope everybody enjoyed those. Next item on the agenda is the first call to the public. I'll read the rules for public speaking. The public shall address the council during the call to the public, which shall be included on the agenda immediately after correspondence and again immediately after new business. The first call to the public immediately after correspondence shall be limited to agenda items only. A person shall not address the council in excess of five minutes unless the time is extended by a majority vote of council present. Persons wishing to address the council shall identify themselves and place of residence and shall state their reason for addressing council. And all comments by the public shall be made directly to the council. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to speak to council on any agenda items? Seeing no one, I'll close the first call to the public. Next item on the agenda is the city manager's reports. There are two. The first is the fire monthly report of July 2018. Anybody have any questions or comments? Mr. Resnick?
Just a comment. I think in light of what Director Moore just said, the -- our fire department was able to respond to the Meadowwood fire very quickly and water was on the fire very quickly and fortunately all residents, inhabitants of the structure were out safely. I know that a dog was lost in that battle, but that also shows the bravery and the dedication of our forces. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Resnick. I'm incredibly proud of them. They knocked that fire down in less than 20 minutes and probably saved the whole building by doing so. Thank you.
Next is the police -- oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. It looked like the weapons offense was up from zero to five. I was just wondering if that was related to any particular incident or anything about that?
The police report?
Oh, okay.
I guess we'll go with it.
Oh, sorry.
I can tell you, Mr. Gottschall, our night shift has had -- has had an interesting July whereby we've taken a number of weapons-related calls for service, not related to any one thing in particular, and I can't even say that one call for service resulted in three weapons being seized. They just had a busy night shift in July.
Okay. And nothing related to domestic violence that you know of, just kind of oddball incidents?
Yeah, found on traffic stops, found at disturbance calls, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else on the police report? Thank you. There is nothing on the consent agenda. There is not -- there is no unfinished business, which takes us to new business. First item under new business is recommendation to accept Hubleroff and Clark's proposals for engineering design and construction engineering services for the tertiary treatment and electrical supply systems at the wastewater treatment facility for a price not to exceed $472,000. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Hi, Tim.
Hi. Thank you, Your Honor and Council. This recommendation is for the engineering side of the upgrades that we are -- that are necessary for the wastewater treatment plant. The tertiary system is one of the final treatment processes that occur at the plant just prior to ultraviolet disinfection, and it's our last chance to capture solids as they pass through the system. What we're recommending is a disc filter system. Basically, it's a 10-micron filter that pushes water through it and is -- the solids are collected there. It's going to be less backwashes and I think it's going to be over the next 20 years or 25 years of its life cycle. It'll be -- the maintenance on it will be much less than what we would do if we would upgrade or, I guess, transform the current system in its entirety. It's about the same price for these two disc filter systems. It'll double the capacity of the tertiary system, and I think it's the right thing to do at this time. The other additional, the electrical systems, we're looking at an upgrade for our generator system and the switch gears and the electrical on that side as well. So with that, it has been budgeted in our 10-year capital, and we look forward to the upgrades.
Mr. Resnick?
Tim, one of the things I wanted to clarify, so the Lamella clarifiers will be gone, completely then replaced by the disc filter?
Correct. And actually, the disc filters, we only need two of those in the train and we have four trains in the tertiary system at this point, so we'll take the outside two out of service and they'll remain in, you know, as a part of the system, but we'll utilize the discs and just renovate those two center ones at this time.
Okay. And my second question, I know that, you know, the best place to catch things like PFAs is at the source, and we're doing everything we can there, but with some of the advances in water treatment systems, are we going to even take a look at something like ionization or these granular activated carbons or some of the newer technologies for possibly getting rid of some of the PFAs?
We would consider that at some point. We've had actually several discussions with the EQ over the last, as you know, over the last month or so about PFAS and PFOs. And this particular upgrade will be ahead of that process if we ever choose to or need to treat at that point. So it will be -- it will be money well spent regardless. What they're saying with like the general activated carbon, that spent carbon with the PFAS in it has to go somewhere, and they're kind of calling it a forever chemical. So if it's in the activated carbon, we take it in there, we have to bring it somewhere. And so if we bring it to the landfill, it goes into the landfill, it leaches out into the water system, then right back to, you know, it's a vicious circle at that point. So we're still under research and it's not required or recommended at this time, and the upgrades that we're looking for here will be ahead of that process if it ever occurs.
I noticed there was a lot of SBIRs that are out there now to try to encourage some research in this area because it's such a big problem now.
Correct. And the other point for treatment at this point is for drinking water, and this plant is for wastewater treatment into a designated stream, so it's the other side of the pipeline.
Yeah, the output of it. But there are some of these processes should be looked at on the wastewater treatment side of it too now, so.
Potentially.
All right. Okay, so this will be a system that would go on after these sediment filters?
After.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes, sir. Hi, Mr. Ziegler. It's in our packet of information, I realize, but just for the benefit of those watching or reading the minutes, could you just give an overview of the cost savings over 20 years over the two different systems?
So the two systems, it is in a packet. We looked at possibly upgrading the tertiary system, and the initial cost for the renovations of the Lamella clarifiers and the sand filters is about the same cost as the installation that we're recommending for the disc filters. So then you're stuck with, I guess, the maintenance and operation, and with the sand filters, which was cutting-edge technology in 1993, that the backwashes for that were almost 10 times what the backwashes will be for these disc filters. So the water processed through the system on a daily basis would be approximately 10 times more with the current system. Also, that utilizes much more air capacity, and, you know, we're looking at those two costs as being a difference of over twice as much for the dinosand filters and the Lamella clarifiers. So is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, that was good. I do know, again, also in the packet, the upfront cost, which we haven't gotten to yet, that's a few weeks down the road.
Right.
Will be a little more substantial, but the long-term cost savings are substantial as well.
Substantial, correct.
Any -- did you give us a rough idea of what the difference in cost? I know you gave me something right as we --
So just, yeah, we had budgeted $1.75 million for the tertiary system and roughly $1 million for the electrical upgrades that we were looking at. We had also budgeted for, I had it, I don't have that in front of me, but 200 --
You mean the cheap thing?
Yeah. There was roughly $240,000 for engineering at that time, and we didn't include the electrical engineering in our 10-year capital plan, but it was in the estimated cost for the generator, the transformer, and the switch gear. So basically, we are budgeted for what we're recommending.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Beagle?
Thanks. I know it says that HRC only six months due there, so what -- how long will it take to do the construction on the?
So the construction, the construction we're estimating is going to take about a year and a half, so this is kind of a two-year program. This first part will primarily be for the switch gears and the electrical systems, and then we'll finalize late winter of 2019, we're hoping.
Okay. And I appreciate the breakdown on the task with the cost with each one, but I also, if we could get it in the future, the past couple that we've had also had a breakdown of like the design and how many hours. If we could get that, I mean, this is a lot of money, and it's sometimes it's, if you can justify where everything's going to, it's a lot easier to accept. Thank you.
Anyone else? I have a motion and a second to accept Hubleroff and Clark's proposals for engineering design and construction engineering services for the tertiary treatment and electrical supply systems at the wastewater treatment facility for a price not to exceed $472,000. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a request for authorization to participate in the State of Michigan Might Deal Purchasing Program for the purchase of two Ford F-350 pickup trucks from Gorno Ford of Woodhaven, Michigan for an amount not to exceed $67,138, and to purchase and install two Western snowplows from -- can you pronounce that?
Oh, Nappide.
What is it?
Nappide.
Nappide?
Truck Equipment, sorry.
Yeah, that's right. Nappide Truck Equipment Center, Flint, Michigan, in the amount of not to exceed $11,882. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion and support.
So this is for pickup trucks that were replacing two older trucks in our fleet. They are the two oldest trucks that we have right now in the pickup fleet. They're one-ton trucks. Originally, we had $80,000 budgeted for this, and one of the reasons for the cost as a lower item, originally, we specked off diesel engines for these, and as you may know, that's another, it's an added $8,000 to $10,000 per truck. And what we were looking at here was with the big block gasoline engines that Ford is producing now, we feel that there's enough power that we'll be able to get the same amount of value in pulling power and transmission power from these trucks, and so we are going with gasoline on these two pickup trucks. The Nappide snowplows are also included. These include side pushouts, if you will, so we can plow on a larger scale, and we seem to, they seem to work fairly well. Yeah, I know, not quite a wing plow, but it's close, and it's as close as we can get for a pickup truck. And that's what we're recommending.
Mr. Resnick?
What will become of the two replaced trucks? Are they going to go to auction or remain in the barn?
That is a good question, and we have a 2002 and a 2003 pickup truck. It's the yellow ones that you've seen driving around town. We will be auctioning them off once we get the new pickups. We're hoping that they can deliver early enough so that we can kind of, kind of put them out to bid, if you will, in the wintertime yet, where four-wheel drives may pull a better price in the winter as opposed to summer months.
Thank you. Mr. Beagle?
Thanks. Under recommended options, this is backup alarm, are we, I thought that was like mandatory on government vehicles or stuff, they have the backup?
It is, but it is an option on the pickups, so we are --
Okay, so we don't have to have it on there?
We will, we will get them on when we get the lights and --
Oh, okay, we can do that, so.
Yeah, we'll do that later.
Okay, we're good, thanks.
Any others? Okay. We have a motion and a second for authorization to participate in the State of Michigan Might Deal Purchasing Program for the purchase of two Ford F-350 pickup trucks from Gorno Ford of Woodhaven, Michigan for an amount not to exceed $67,138, and to purchase and install two Western snowplows from Nappide Truck Equipment Center, Flint, Michigan, in an amount not to exceed $11,882. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Next item on the agenda is consideration of entering into a closed session for the purpose of performance evaluation for the city manager and the city clerk. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Councilmember Leader?
Yes.
Councilmember Resnick?
Yes.
Councilmember Smiley?
Yes.
Mayor Ziegler?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Beagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottschall?
Yes.
Six yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the second call to the public. Would anybody like to, I'll open that up now, anybody like to come up and speak to council on any item they might have on their mind? on any item they might have on their mind? Seeing no one, I'll close the second call to the public. City manager's comments, Mr. Brown?
So there's a couple of updates in the city manager's update that was provided in the packet, Your Honor. There's information on project updates, political signs, staffing issues that we're experiencing unfortunately, and the item that Councilman Resnick mentioned a little bit earlier, which is the chemical substances that are referred to as PFOs that we're experiencing some issues with related to new attentions being paid to that, that subject. I've provided some information on there. The, long story short on that, just to provide some information at this, this public meeting beyond what's been provided on the website and other forms of information. The City of Wixom does not produce or utilize anything that has a PFOs content. That was possible, that our firefighting activities could have had that with the firefighting foam that's utilized there. However, we utilize a type of foam, a Class B type of foam, that does not contain any of that PFOs chemical substance problem. So we don't have that issue in anything that we produce, so we have a situation where an industrial user in the city has ceased using the chemicals containing that, those substances, but in spite of that, somehow, they are still continuing to have wastewater discharges that are coming to our plant that have higher-than-allowed concentrations of these PFOs substances. So we're working with that company. We're working with the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality to determine how that is and how that's happening, and playing a cooperative role in that as we try to figure out how that's occurring so we can stop that and eliminate it at its source, as Councilman Resnick mentioned when he spoke on it a little bit earlier. So that's basically where we're at. Unfortunately, that's something that could take a while. Based on prior experience, there are other spots in the state where this has been a problem, and it stretches back over a year, and it's been persistent even over that year's time period, and we're hopeful that we'll make faster progress on that, but that's up to the, the status of the knowledge and the investigation that we're going to be doing. So that's all I had.
Thank you.
If there's anything anybody has in terms of any questions or anything on any of the events that are upcoming, please let me know, and I'll do my best to answer any questions.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is council comments. Mr. Leader?
Quickly, just wanted to wish leshonot tova to the Jewish community of Wixom. Happy New Year, have an easy fast in 10 days. And then, secondly, we have a whole bunch of, I guess, advertising materials and things that popped up, and it got me thinking. At the budget sessions, we talked about doing something with redesigning the logo or upgrading the look of some of these things. Is there any progress on that, or has that been kind of pushed aside? Because I'm still looking at the same, you know, tired, similar stuff that we were trying to get away from.
Yeah, we've done some work with, with our economic development director, preliminary is what I would call it at this point, so stay tuned for that. We're going to bring something forward to discuss on that.
Okay. Otherwise, I'm all set.
Thank you. Councilman Resnick?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to say the, I attended the block party this past Saturday, and it's quite a, it's growing into a very nice event. It was well-attended in spite of the weather, but it was a little bit cool out there, but the live music was great, and the food selections were excellent, and there was a lot of, a lot of things for the kids to do as well, so I'm looking forward to seeing that grow.
Thank you. Councilman Smiley?
Thank you. I just want to thank Public Safety Director Moore for his words on this sacred day. My house was very somber today, and we, like so many Americans, will never forget. God bless. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gotchel?
No comments, right? Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thanks. Just one quick one. I see that we had our first Hope Not Handcuff, I don't...
Referral?
With referral, and it's already been a successful program, so thanks for installing things.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I can't, I appreciate the comments that you made this evening, Director Moore. It really was a touching and moving commentary, and I was also there this morning, and I thought your presentation this morning was excellent as well to the, to the, to the business forum, so I appreciate all your effort and, and presentations. I noticed this evening that I, I think that we were getting fewer and fewer people showing up for our council meetings, and I think that that might be part, one of the reasons, I think, is because we're having them televised now, frankly. It gives people an excuse not to come to the meetings, and I think that might be one of the unintended consequences of televising them, but just my observation. People that normally would come, I don't see them anymore coming, but anyway. We'll, we'll adjourn for about five minutes and meet with the, meeting the city manager's office to take care of the business that we already passed on. So with that, thanks for coming out tonight, and see everybody in a couple weeks. Thank you.